Good evening, this is Enid Lapelis, Chairman of the Monroe Town Council. Today is May 11, 2020, and it's 8:01 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Monroe Town Council. As is customary before the start of our meetings, would you all please join me in deciding the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it forms, which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please allow me to confirm the presence of those Town Council members and any other staff or anticipated participants are present and are able to hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. DeeDee Martin? DeeDee? You have to get off the mute, I guess. Okay, so DeeDee Martin? Jennifer Aguilar?
Here.
Jason Mauer?
Present.
Terry Rooney? Terry Rooney? All right, we'll go on. Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, present.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, present.
Sean O'Rourke is absent tonight. Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, present.
Enid Lapelis, present. So Terry Rooney? All right, we'll go on, maybe he'll come in. Staff and other anticipated participants, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. First Electman Ken Kellogg?
Ken Kellogg, present.
Town Attorney Frank Lieto?
Present, Frank Lieto.
Director of Finance Ron Bonavsky?
Ron Bonavsky, present.
Director of Public Works Chris Nowacki?
Chris Nowacki, present.
Board of Finance Chairman Mike Manjos?
Mike Manjos, present.
Board of Finance Vice Chair John Ostroschowski? Okay, one more time. Board of Finance Vice Chair John Ostroschowski? All right, we'll see if he comes in. Town Engineer Scott Schatzlein?
Enid, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if anybody else is having the same problem.
All right.
Okay.
So let's go. We have Board of Finance Vice Chair John Ostroschowski? Yeah, I'll turn my, if I can get the speaker off. I'm not sure I can do that and stay on. I'll just hold it up. All right, so no John Ostroschowski. Town Engineer Scott Schatzlein? No, Scott. I hereby declare a quorum and call this meeting to order. A copy of the agenda and any related-- I beg your pardon?
DeeDee, I'm here.
Okay. A copy of the agenda and any related materials have been posted to and can be found on the Town of Monroe's website, www-monroecp.org for public inspection. I hereby appoint Town Attorney Frank Lieto to serve as moderator of the meeting to ensure we are compliant with both state law and the Governor's executive orders governing remote electronic meetings. At this time, I will ask the moderator and Town Attorney Frank Lieto to introduce the rules of the remote electronic meetings.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. This meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7B dated March 14, 2020, using Go-To-Meaning Electronic Conference Technology. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone using the access information set forth in the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has unique participation information, so please be sure that you have accessed the correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any one time. Access to this meeting using this technology is granted solely by the technology provider on a first-access basis and not controlled by the Town of Monroe, while it is anticipated that we will not exceed the participation limit for this meeting. Should it appear that we are approaching said limits, that any member of the public is denied access to this meeting, the Chairman retains the right to return and continue the meeting at a later date using technology that is more appropriate to ensure all member of the public may participate. Please take notice of the following regarding this electronic meeting. This meeting is being conducted in real time. This meeting is open to the public. That any member of the public may listen or view to this meeting anonymously. This meeting is being recorded, and while we ask that you mute your microphones unless you are recognized to speak, anything you say, do, or is displayed on your screen may become part of the recording. That the recording shall be posted to the town's website within seven days. That the recording shall be made available to the public within a reasonable time in Town Hall or upon request. As set forth in the agenda, this meeting will feature and permit public participation. Any written comments from the public regarding any business which would otherwise be germane to the public participation and received between the date the agenda was posted through one hour before the start of the meeting this evening will be read into the record by the Chairman during the public participation portion of the meeting. Some ground rules before I turn the floor back over to the Chair. The meeting shall follow standard parliamentary procedure. However, I ask that everybody follow the additional rules as follows. Please mute your microphone to reduce background noise unless you're speaking. Prior to speaking, please try to remember to state your name. For the record, I fail at that all the time. The use of the chat feature is prohibited and will not be considered at any time during the meeting. With regard to matters of business on the agenda, I think everybody's used to this process now. If it's a motion or resolution that's subject to discussion, after a motion and a second, the Chair is going to just go down the line, call on each member of council by order to allow everybody the opportunity to speak once and again and again until everybody's had an opportunity to speak as much as they want to on each issue or until someone calls for a vote pursuant to Robert's rules. The vote will be by roll call, so Madam Chair will call on each of you by name and ask that you affirmatively and verbally state your vote so that the record is clear. And like I said, we're keeping a record minutes here, so please try to speak clearly. If there's no questions, I'll turn the Chair of the meeting back over to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, before we begin, I understand that Mr. Reed wishes to make a motion regarding suspension of the rules of procedure. Mr. Reed?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that pursuant to Article 7 of our Rules of Procedure. The Town Council suspend Rule 13, which requires all matters relating to the general government of the town and all agreements to which the town is a party be referred to LNA. The reason for this motion is that due to the coronavirus, our subcommittees, including LNA, have not met to consider the matters which appear on this evening's agenda, which otherwise would have been referred to and voted on by LNA as a condition precedent to appearing before the full body.
Second?
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Can I ask you--
Jason Mauer, a second.
Okay, thank you, I just wasn't sure. Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for roll on the motion to suspend the rules. DeeDee Martin? DeeDee? Let's go to Jen Aguilar?
Aye.
Okay, Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney, are you in yet? Okay, probably absent. Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
Enid Lapelis, aye. So I'm counting up the people. We have a seven--
DeeDee Martin?
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, DeeDee. So the motion passed at 7:0. Consent calendar, are there any objections to me passing the consent calendar as presented?
Jen Aguilar, I'd like to move something into new business, Madam Chair.
Okay, let me just, all right, let me just get to new business. Okay, go ahead.
Item F, do you need the sub?
Um, no, let me just get, because I have pieces of paper. Let me get to F. Okay, all right, so where is, let's see. Okay, so, all right, let's make it, you're saying item F?
Yes.
Okay, fine, so what do you, what do you want?
I'd like to make a motion to move item F from the consent calendar into new business to discuss.
Okay, all righty, so let me go back to it. Just give me a second, because everything's on paper here. All right. Consent calendar, because then I'll write next to it, new business. I'm sure I won't forget, but if I do, Jen, just stop me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me just get to consent calendar. Okay, all right, so item F. Okay, I'll take it from there. All righty, all right, so at the time, I'll ask the moderator, Attorney Frank Lieto, to identify if there are any individuals who wish to participate in public participation. Anybody?
Madam Chair, this is Steve Kirsch, member of the Board of Finance. I just wanted, for the record, to state that I'm present tonight.
Okay, thank you. So now we have a-- Okay. All right, anybody else?
This is Hannah, I'm just, I'm present as well.
Okay, so who are you?
Hannah, Hannah Lee.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So if any members of the public wish to participate at time, I would ask you to slowly and clearly state your name, so I have that now. Okay, anybody else besides Mr. Kirsch and Mrs. Ali? Okay, so two individuals wish to speak, and I have their names. All righty. Any other individuals wish to speak who have not been, have not spoken up yet? Okay. Due to the action items, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, there were no reports from our subcommittees at this time. However, I will go to item G, action item G, and ask the First Electman for his update. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you go on, I just wanted to clarify. My understanding prior is that Mr. Kirsch and Mrs. Lee were simply advising that they were on the call in their official capacities, and they did not intend to speak in public participation, but I think we just wanted to clarify that, because--
Okay, thank you, sir. All right.
I believe that's correct, Mr. Kirsch?
That is correct, that is correct.
I just want to make sure we weren't moving along too fast. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Getting to my report this evening. As you know, I've got, you've got my written report that was given out that is, has a couple of items on there, first being the COVID-19 update, which I'll get into a little bit more specifics in a moment. But the one item that I wanted to highlight that I gave you in writing was in regards to a directive that was issued on May 6 in regards to outdoor seating for restaurants. As I'm sure you're all aware, as part of that, the Governor's reopen plan, this is an item that was brought up as being allowed after May 20. We've been advised that there may be an executive order that provides some clarity regarding local rules such as zoning. However, it has not happened yet unless it happened in the last hour or so, and the details remain a little bit unclear. It was critical to provide our local businesses some assurances that we would have an approval process locally that would not be subject to our current zoning regulations and the approval process, and so they needed to start planning immediately, so that directive was sent to you. The second item I have on my written report is just an update on roads, but before I get to that, I just wanted to stick with the COVID-19 update first and just kind of give you some, kind of some updates. A lot of this is stuff you'll be aware of already from my updates to the community. As of this evening, we've, the state is reporting we're at 91 cases. I wanted to highlight for the council that one of the things we also look at, which is not something I routinely put on the website because it changes quite a bit, but we also take good note of our case rate. So in terms of how many cases we have on a population basis compared to other municipalities in the state, and our rate ranks us about 89th out of 169 municipalities in the state, so middle of the pack, so to speak, which I think for a town that is in Fairfield County, which has the highest rates going, I think is something that at least we are, you know, we're certainly not comfortable with any cases, but it is something that I think provides us some reassurance that our community is, you know, following the rules and doing what we can to keep our numbers as low as possible. Hospitalizations in the state continue on the right trajectory, the right direction. I think everyone's aware that the state, the Governor, has released the Phase 1 of the Kindergarten reopen plan, which is, appears to be still on track from May 20. We've shared specific guidelines that came out from the state with, for those handful of specific operations that are allowed to open in different ways, and we are doing ongoing outreach to make sure that we support these businesses and assist them in getting operational to the extent that they are allowed to and they're following the rules. And it's something that we certainly want to make sure we do in a balanced way because the, as you know in your packet and in a prior email I sent out, the unemployment concerns throughout the state have not gone without impacting Monroe. I believe when I sent you the update, which was sometime in April, we had a rate that estimated around 14.5%. This is from the March Department of Labor report, which had Monroe at 3.7%, about 374 people at that time. The number of individuals that have applied for new claims since March 15 has risen since that time, and while there's some assumptions that go into this, because not, you know, not everyone who applies necessarily will qualify, there still could be some duplicates, et cetera, but if you add the 1,700 and, I'm sorry, the 1,378 people that have applied since March 15 to that base number, that rate would now be up over 17%, which is quite concerning. It is still lower than what is the estimated rate in the state, which is, I've heard anything from 19 to over 20, but until the Department of Labor comes out with more solid numbers, that's the best data we have to go by. So that said, there are some encouraging signs, again, in hoping that we can start reopening some of those businesses that may have had to furlough employees after May 20. I've been in a lot of close contact with our EDC Chair. I know we have several businesses that applied for and received loans under that payroll protection plan, and we're hoping that we're going to have some encouraging signs. Just switching to some town updates from different departments and different programs. I know that everyone got my update in regards to the Memorial Day Parade, something that I certainly didn't like having to do, but we have canceled the parade this year, as many towns have that have Memorial Day parades for obvious reasons. We will, however, conduct a ceremony just as soon as it is practical and safe and allowed to do so to honor the veterans that we have lost. I sent an update out over the weekend in regards to the Monroe Farmers Market. It was important to let, to find a way to have a market operate for their full season. There were a lot of logistical concerns that the market volunteers had, and there was a lot of concerns over variability and wanting to have one plan so that we could have something that was consistent and predictable that would also meet the needs of the vendors, who were also looking for the same thing. So we have, we have worked with emergency management and Parks and Rec and a lot of folks that have contributed to this to operate in a pre-order and drive-through pickup process at Fireman's Field. And while it's certainly, you know, not the ideal environment that we've enjoyed on Town Hall Green for many, many years, it does allow the market to be able to continue and function this season, and we're certainly hopeful we can go back to a traditional market in future seasons. I want to give an update, again, in terms of starting to reopen things and looking towards the future. We've been working very closely with Public Works, Emergency Management, and Human Resources as we start thinking about our various Town Hall and other town facilities and working out a plan to slowly and thoughtfully resume some public access as we may safely do so. We will likely start with more appointment-based access, but we are working on a variety of efforts ranging from how offices are set up to installing Plexiglas at certain public counters like the Town Clerk, the Assessor's Office, et cetera. But we will continue to work towards that, and we'll continue to meet the needs as we have been with appointments, with remote access phones. We have a very popular drop box in the Police Department lobby where many departments receive information, hard copy stuff that is dropped off for them, and then they return things in a similar fashion. Again, talking about, you know, wanting to start in quote-unquote reopening things, one of the things that I think everyone's aware of is that boards and commissions were advised up to this point to really limit their meetings to critical agenda items. If they didn't have anything that was critical or time-sensitive, they could certainly decide to cancel based upon such a lack of criticality. Because the rules beyond May 20 continue to restrict social gatherings and they are discouraging office meetings of more than five people, we will be continuing to support remote access through meetings. However, we are going to be encouraging boards and commissions to consider their agendas a little more thoughtfully and perhaps look to some of the boards and commissions that have not met and see if they could, even if they need to be selective on their agenda items, to resume some of those. We've been working to, we work to prioritize our go-to-meeting licenses accordingly, and we will work with chairs of commissions, just as we have with those that have said they want to conduct a meeting. We will work with them, and we're going to be sending out more information to a broader group that have, some of the chairs that have not run meetings yet will be sending more information out to them and how they can proceed in that regard. Talk a little bit about Parks and Recreation. You know, the programming at Parks and Rec as relates to outdoor recreation, the pool, things like that, there's still not a lot of clarity from the state in terms of how we are going to proceed, so that is still in a bit of a holding pattern. However, we are trying to move forward on planning for the Summer Fund Days. The state has said that they will allow municipal camps to open under certain conditions after June 29. They've released some, but not all of those details. So we've been told we'll get real, additional details and more clarity on Friday, and after that, we will determine the feasibility that we, where we think in terms of feasibility and what we can plan on for this season. And had some questions on Wolf Park and Great Hollow Lake after May 20, and my intention is to maintain the residence and taxpayer-only parking restriction at those locations until such time that the social gathering rules have changed sufficiently that we would want to open the parking up beyond that. Switching to Town Clerk and Red Star Voters, I wanted to let everyone know that the Secretary of State did release a 2020 voting plan for both the primary and the general election. Those two departments are working very diligently to get their arms around all the issues and requirements. There's a lot to it. They need to develop some very specific local plans that range from locations to staffing, safety products, training, protocols, et cetera. So they are working on that. The good news is that the state has stated that they will provide grants through the Secretary of State's office for the incremental costs of those efforts, provided that there is a local plan, which of course we will comply with. One of the areas that the state has also indicated is that they will be expanding absentee ballot access and that the state will be mailing ballots to all eligible voters. They'll be providing the town with a secure ballot drop box, which we intend to install outside of Town Hall, near the police station, and all the applications, the ballots will have prepaid postage as well. So that's the update there. And then I wanted to kind of conclude with Social Services, you know, senior center, food pantry, et cetera. I think everyone knows that this group has been doing a phenomenal efforts to keep things rolling. Our food pantry demand is up. Interestingly, it's not up dramatically in terms of the number of clients that we are, families that we are serving, but it is certainly up significantly compared to this time last year when you look at the total number of visits. Up actually, Hannah was telling me, was up 13%. So while, you know, just indicates that those that have any of the need has been much, much greater. But that said, we have received tremendous support from the community. We've received, as you know, in the donations memo that you have in the packet that was on your consent calendar, we've received over $30,000 in donations to all of our various programs, food pantry being a large one, and some of those donations I know are on your agenda tonight for some of the larger supporters. I just wanted to say that, you know, the support from the community has just been wonderful, and it's greatly appreciated. There are also some grants that we've received that were on the consent. I know you've moved them under new business, so we'll discuss some of those perhaps later on, but we have a grant from SWACA, which is providing grocery bags to over, we're getting up to about 200 residents a week. And just to share, an email I received this morning from a resident, a senior, has underlying health conditions, can't wear a mask because it makes her work of breathing worse, doesn't want to risk going to the grocery store, and she wanted to just take the time to thank the town and our Social Services Department and the volunteers when she found her bag of groceries on her front step this morning after registering for the program. So I just want to echo what a wonderful job that that group is doing. We also received $6,000 from the Fairfield County Community Foundation, and United Way has provided us with a limited number of emergency gift cards for social services clients in need. So that was the gist of my update, just to give you some, some things to, some things to update you on COVID. The, going back to my original report, the written report where I referenced roads, the council had asked at a prior meeting for some updates on roads. I had provided you with what had been done this current fiscal year, and what was pending was the plan for the future, the next fiscal year '21. That preliminary plan has been completed. It was included in my, in an update I sent to you Sunday night and was put up on the town's website as well. The plan was developed in response to some direction and some thought process that we had here internally relative to the direction the Board of Finance wanted to go and really to kind of delay decisions on bonding, which we'll talk about, I know, further on in your agenda. We talk about capital. So in that spirit, I've, you know, working with Public Works and our Finance Department, I asked them to create a plan that would prioritize the use of state grants first, primarily the TAR grant, Town Aid Road. And so the document that's in your package kind of has the list of priorities on the left third of the page, kind of in descending order, and then in the middle third of the page is the original fiscal year '21 budget proposal and kind of how, and by funding source, and as you'll see, there was bonding that was going to be prioritized first in the original plan. That revised plan now takes the bonding and kind of leaves that to be the last thing we will look at, prioritizes the Town Aid Road grant, and you'll see as we get down to some of those streets, by the time you get down to like Sunset Hill and Weathervein, there's some, that's where you get to the point that if we were not comfortable by then to say, let's go into those bond funds, we would have to defer some of those, and that would continue down to the next section as well. The plan does, however, though, maintain all the maintenance costs that are in operating expense, because if we, if we don't continue that, we'll just make the problem worse down the road. So you'll see all the milling paving and crack sealing was kind of left in the plan, so to speak. And while, you know, certainly I know you might have questions now or possibly that could be discussed in the, in the, under new business during the capital. I do have Mr. Nowacki on the line in case there's any specifics you have relative to that, but that is the plan that we have put forth, and I believe it was, at least from my perception, it was well-received by the Board of Finance. Mr. Manjos is on the call as well, I'm sure he can chime in as well if you need him to. So that is my update for this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. Jen Aguilar, can I ask the first selectman a question?
Sure, of course.
Mr. Kellogg, I had a question about, two questions actually. Thank you for such a great update. It was very informative. I wanted to ask you about what is EDC doing to reach out to businesses about reopening? Since it's next week, have they been talking? I've gotten a couple emails from people about concerns that businesses aren't well informed about what's expected of them. Is, do you know anything about that?
Sure. I know that our EDC chair has been working with the commission members and I know that they have been contacting residents, going up and down, going up and down to reach out to them to the extent possible. There is information constantly being put up on the website in terms of those, those guidelines by sector. Some of the specific businesses that the town regulates, like restaurants, each will receive a call and in the hair salons for that matter, will be contacted directly by the health department as well. And I know, again, I know EDC will be contacting some of those retail establishments in that regard. We also, again, a good, strong partnership with our chamber, and I know the chamber has been sending out emails to their lists as well. And we are currently in the process of trying to, you know, ensure that we continue a robust plan to make sure we can have a more robust ongoing communication with all those businesses. But as we, as we identify more and get contact information for those that we don't normally regulate or the EDC doesn't normally, may not have a touch point for, we're trying to capture that as well.
Okay, just, I know I get emails from the Newtown Chamber and the Trumbull Chamber. And I think during this entire time, I've gotten three from the Monroe Chamber and almost twice a week from Newtown and Trumbull both, but so that, it concerns me a bit. But my next question was okay. Signs in the town. I've noticed a lot of signs. I know you've given direction that people can put up signs to advertise, but I'm actually, I get a little concerned that maybe it's being abused. I've seen signs now for this fences, this dog fence is provided by blah, blah, blah. Or this energy is provided by the company that's providing the oil in town. And on just on 111, I think one of the daycare centers has about five signs in front of the Dairy Queen, whatever that plaza is. There's signs everywhere in front of that. I just, I just have a little concern that maybe it's being over. I don't know if that's a thing, but if it's being over, you, over taken advantage of.
Okay. Well, I, you know, what I waived was the zoning regulations regarding the temporary signs of businesses that they're allowed to put out during their business operations. Specifically waived their need to get and pay for a permit for that, if they didn't already have one. So the other side, I mean, I think a lot of the signs that you're referring to, I mean, some of them sound like they could possibly be commercial in nature, but I know that there's some, I mean, I, I'm familiar with some, you know, service companies that might put up a temporary sign saying, you know, this, you know, whatever, XYZ service was provided by, and they typically are up for a very short time to come down. Some of what you're referring to is, I think are signs that are intended to kind of provide some community spirit and, and unity and in the time of crisis. I mean, there are signs up there that are thanking our healthcare workers and our first responders and trying to encourage people to think towards a brighter future. And I certainly don't want to quash that well-intended spirit. That said, I mean, if there are clearly commercial signs that are not, that are in violation of our regulations or the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish, we'll certainly, you know, you know, try and have our, our zoning enforcement staff evaluate that. But certainly this is not a time where the town's looking to be heavy handed with that.
I agree.
I want to work with those businesses and advise them, you know, what would be reasonable at this time and what, you know, what clearly might be over the line. So I would say if you have, if there's any, you know, we certainly have to do it now, but if there's any specific cases that, that you're aware of, they could certainly be reported to the zoning enforcement officer and they'll evaluate those on a case by case basis.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that it, Mrs. Aguilar?
That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so for new business, item A, discussion on fiscal year 2021 capital budget. You all know that our original schedule to review the capital budget was impacted by the pandemic. The first selectman asked to discuss this matter tonight, so I'll turn this over to First Selectman Kellogg.
Okay, thank you again, Madam Chair. I just actually want to just kind of preface this a little bit and really turn it over to the Board of Finance Chairman Manjos that I asked be invited to this meeting so that they could, he could discuss it a little bit further. But I know that, you know, the board, you know, it was important to me that we circle back to council because we never, we never did get to that point where we had a detailed discussion on a project by project basis on the capital plan. As this has kind of evolved and because of the COVID crisis, there's not now, not just a, not just impacted by scheduling, but we're impacted by how we want to proceed from a financial perspective and how the Board of Finance wishes to finalize the fiscal year 21 budget, which as you know, they are now the authority to adopt that. So one of the things that we had discussed at the last Board of Finance meeting, what the chairman had, had talked to me about and, and I, we, we talked about was that some of the categories of capital, whether it's bonding or even a lot of the things that are in the capital reserve do not have to be included in the fiscal year 21 budget as approved in order to be taken up later on, even during the fiscal year. And I will certainly let him, let Mr. Manjos speak to that a little bit further, but I think the direction that we're talking about is trying to let some time go by and see where we are and really focus on just getting things that are really critical and things that are grant funded exclusively so that those can proceed on 71. But other things we can, they can be proposed at any time and they can be approved by the council and Board of Finance. So with that, I wanted Mr. Manjos to to speak in more detail with your permission, Mr. Pelles.
Of course. Mr. Manjos?
Thank you very much. So yeah, basically I wanted to come and just bring everybody up to speed on the direction we're heading in and where I think it's going to end up. Again, this is a different year since our normal process got interrupted. One of the things that we're looking at right now is coming up with a budget that's going to not increase taxes. We're going to do that in a number of different ways. First, most important way is we plan on using fund balance to help us get through this pandemic and the crisis that we're facing. At this point, we are going to make a substantial assumption of lowering our collection rate because based on the current unemployment situation and the current business environment, we expect there could be some difficulties in collecting some of the taxes and could be a drop in revenues in a lot of areas which we've gone through. The third thing we have gonna, we've gonna ask all town employees to defer any raises. In this environment, it's difficult to have people getting raises when so many people are unemployed. So that's the approach we're taking. And when it comes to capital, we've basically discussed trying to defer anything that's possible to be deferred. So if it's not an emergency situation or if it's not something that's of critical need from a safety standpoint, we are proposing pushing it back. Again, if things eight months, it can always be rebrought up by the first selectman can propose it at any time he sees fit. And it would go to council and finance for approval. So our feeling right now is based on the uncertainty in cash flows, the uncertainty in the state's finances, the uncertainty in the federal finances, we have got to be as conservative as possible. We're going to use funds wherever possible, be it the general fund, be it Town Aid Roads. One of the big discussions we did have was Rhodes and Chris Nowacki and First Selectmen have put together a good plan that spells it out so we can continue to accomplish some work on Rhodes without doing bonding. It's just in this market, we don't feel it's prudent to go out for bonding. I don't really want to be taking on more debt in this environment. We're just going to be as conservative as we can possibly be. See where this takes us financially and then we can make decisions as they go forward. So basically we went through the listings, the only things, there were a couple of things that we felt we should move forward with. The first one was on the Board of Ed side. They do have a situation with Chromebooks that were on an ongoing replacement basis that obviously distance learning is something that's, we've become aware that's very important. We have to be prepared for the possibility of it coming up again. So I want to make sure that they have all the assets they need. So we, after lots of discussion, we're leaning towards putting in the capital reserve 105,000 for the Board of Ed for Chromebooks and One Lab. There's also a server that was in there. And again, with all this go to meeting and all these distance, it's important to have our infrastructure electronically set up. So we're going to be funding that. And then there was also another 5,000 for breathing apparatus for one of the fire departments. Again, it's life-saving equipment and we don't want to cut that. But beyond that, our feeling is we're going to defer everything else. Unless it becomes an emergency or unless the financial situation dramatically changes, then we can make the appropriate change anytime during the course of the year.
Thank you very
Happy to answer any questions if anybody has any issues or concerns. We just wanted to try to make everybody aware of where we're at. We're, and again, we're not done yet, but we'll be a few more weeks before we finalize the budget.
Anybody have any questions or concerns for Mr. Manjos?
Madam Chair.
And just identify yourself, please.
Jason Mauer.
Go ahead.
Hi Mike, just wanted to comment on, I, I understand the, the mentality of not wanting to take on additional debt. There is the aspect that I am concerned about in that with rates being what they are, bonding rates being what they are, that this is going to actually end up costing us money in the long run and lead to higher tax increases down the road. While we may
Do you think rates are going to go up?
I, I think we have some time, but
But that's my point is I don't foresee rates jumping for certainly not a year to 18 months by any means. There's any indication that rates will actually fall further. If you notice the stiff rates dropped about 15 to 20% in the last six weeks.
That I agree with my, my
Rates are going to head in any other direction at this point.
I guess my question is that is the strategy of the Board of Finance that once we do start to see an economic turnaround while rates are still low, do we have an appetite for increased borrowing compared to previous years to take advantage of these lower, to take advantage of the low rates, once we feel we are in that comfortable position?
Rates have been pretty much low for the last four or five years. I mean, there's not, yeah, rates are lower than they were six months ago, but for the last, you know, two or three years, rates haven't changed that dramatically. So I mean, you know, the town, the first selectman can propose anything he'd like and town council has to approve and Board of Finance has to approve it. Personally, we've also had an issue of only be able to accomplish a certain amount of work per year, even when we had excess bonding. We had done a double bonding in one year. And I don't know if you were on at that time, but it, it took about 18 months to get the work done. So there's also limitations of what the town can handle. But I'm certainly open to it. I mean, our bonding, our debt level right now is quite low. You know, but I don't think we're going to have a raising rate environment for quite a long time for this concern.
Mike, Mike and Jason, this is Ron Bonavsky. Can I just say something quickly? You know, Jason, even though interest rates are low right now, the risk profile of municipalities isn't great. So it, it might not translate to a lower borrowing cost until things work their way through.
Yeah, right now with all the uncertainty in finance, municipal finance is not someplace places people are running to. They're running to treasuries, they're running to other areas, but I think what you're going to see, especially with the current financial statement, you might see the state be downgraded, which affects our bond rate, our ratings and our financing costs. So it's also a risk profile to Ron's point. This is not a great environment or time to be bonding because there's so much uncertainty.
And my one other question was regarding the use of fund balance.
Yes, please.
Like I said during the Board of Finance meeting, obviously this is a rainy day fund and this is as rainy of a day as we've seen. Is there any concern or any, and if there is concern, have we come to any consensus on how to address this concern of that if this is a sustained crisis or sustained rainy day that brings us into the following year's budget, the 2021, 2022 budget, that we won't have enough in our fund balance to not then face an exponential tax increase much further than what we had already anticipated?
Well, I mean, two points. One is, yes, that is a risk without a question. And we are taking a risk by being aggressive and aggressively using it. I do believe that we'll be in a much better position 15 months from now, which is really what, when you're talking about. So I, I think the, it's a calculated risk, but I think it's a risk worth taking. I would assume if we're not out of trouble in 14 or 15 months, then we're going to have even more serious problems. So we're going to have to, I believe we have to take that risk, which is why I proposed it. I think, you know, we still will have balance left. We're assuming a 93% collection rate or 92 and a half percent collection rate. If it comes in more than that, we won't use as much fund balance as we had proposed. So there is a possibility we will restore some of that. But there's a risk we'll be looking at a bigger problem next year without a doubt. Even if we're not, we're going to be looking at a big tax increase next year. There's no question about that. And I've said that to anybody who will listen. That is the reality of the plan we're taking, the approach we're taking. But right now, I don't believe 15 months from now, we'll have 15% unemployment, 20% unemployment, which we're going to have in the next four to six weeks. So my feeling is we need to do everything we can just like the federal government's doing to get through this crisis. They can't sustain what they're doing either. But you're taking emergency move to try to get over the hump. And then believe in the fact that the economy, the state, the country will come back. And that's the approach I'm taking.
And you actually touched upon my last question a little bit there, which is that I know we've said that we're taking a very conservative approach to the idea of revenues coming in and tax collection. That we, do we we expect this to be on the extreme conservative level that we, we're trying to put it kind of at the max risk of what we foresee. Obviously, we can't foretell
I was just going to say, I mean, if you asked me three months ago if we would be in this situation, I would have said not a chance. If you told me we were going to close schools, if we were going to do all the things we've done. So I don't know what the max potential problem is. I do see big issues with what's going on and I don't think things are going to come back as quickly as some people think because there is some lasting damage and not everybody's going to get back to work. It's just a reality is some companies will take this time to restructure. We will lose some companies. People will, some people will be permanently out or out for quite a long time. I think that's just a reality of any economic downturn. So it's going to take, you know, it's not going to be in three months, we're going to be back to normal. It's going to be a longer term process. So we're taking what I believe is a very conservative approach. But I could be wrong. And, you know, maybe in six months we'll be like this going, hey, we should have known better. It was going to be worse than that. But I believe we're taking the right approach. I believe we're taking the right approach. A lot of towns are being much more aggressive than we are. When I've seen some of the things out there, it scares me. Because some people are not, I don't think contemplating the full economic effect that we're going through. The state's going to be in a terrible financial position. If you just start thinking about lost sales tax, lost income, lost gas revenue. State wasn't in great shape beforehand. We're going through, we're going now on two, three months of diminished revenues dramatically. And at some point, the appetite of the federal government to bail everyone out is going to run out. So, you know, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about our, you know, education funding from the state. Now they're saying right now, everything's going to be fine and we're making that assumption, but that's a risk factor we're taking. We don't know how damaged state of Connecticut is going to get. And typically, when funds do come in, they don't typically come our way. They typically get directed to different areas. So I'm not expecting to be bailed out either. So that's why we're taking a very conservative approach. Yes, it's an aggressive play to use our fund balance. But again, I've pitched as a rainy day fund for years and we've built it up nicely over the last 10 years. So, you know, we're going to go back to where we were when I started this. And it might take us 10 years to build back up, but we, I believe we need to do this to the tax, for the taxpayers. I don't think you can raise taxes in this environment. I truly believe that. I think that would be wrong on so many levels. So we're going to take the steps that we think we can take, that's manageable. If it gets better, the good news is if it gets better, yes, our fund balance won't get used. The only thing we would have done is we're going to defer the tax increase till next year. That's the worst thing. So someone's going to get a year of a break and then they're going to get a bigger hit next year. So if things work out, that'll be the best case scenario.
Thank you for the answers and thank you and the entire Board of Finance for all of the work and research you all have been doing. I know this is
Thank you. We have a great team.
Very, very tough task and I am certainly not envious of the position that you guys are in and making these decisions.
Thank you.
So thank you all. While the Board of Finance does have final budget approving authority this year, I appreciate that they are consulting with the Town Council in the spirit of our original plan. While the Town Council is not required to vote on this matter, I will now ask each council member for his or her input on this matter so that the Board of Finance may be fully informed of our individual opinions. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin here. Can you hear me Enid?
Yes, I can.
Very good, thanks. It's, it's, this is a horrible situation. I, I agree. I think the Board of Finance is doing the best that they can do. We're in a difficult situation. And I, I trust that they will stay on top of it and keep us informed.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Martin. Jennifer Aguilar?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. You wanted to know just our, we're not voting on anything, correct? Yeah, just our opinion. I, I could actually second what DeeDee, Mrs. Martin said. Thank you, Mr. Manjos and Mr. Kirsch and everybody who's working on this budget. I've been trying to listen to as many Board of Finance meetings as I can on the budget. And I know this is we, I agree, we can't raise taxes right now. It's, it's hearing the number seven, over 17% unemployment in town. I mean, that just, that blows away even the it's 3% above the national unemployment number. So thank you so much. I agree with not spending on capital this year. Would, I, I don't see it viable. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, this is certainly unprecedented times and the true definition of being stuck between a rock and a hard place in making these decisions. I understand the Board of Finance's view and I think that fortunately they have been very articulate in their rationale of the direction that they're heading. I do appreciate the comments that were stated earlier that if things do take a turn, that we know we have the comfortability that we can reevaluate throughout the year. And I just would echo what Councilwoman Martin said in that please do keep us informed is to if your opinions change on the situation so that we can get ahead of the ball as we always try to do. It's something that I think this council, this Board of Finance, this administration has been priding itself on since, at least in my tenure here, that getting ahead of the ball and trying to make sure that we take care of things as early as possible and as expeditiously and efficiently as possible. So I appreciate the situation you're in and wish you the best of luck in it.
Thank you.
But I, I, I understand what the rationale is a little bit better now and can put my support behind it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mauer. Jonathan Formicella?
This is Jonathan Formicella. I just want to express my support and thanks to Mr. Manjos, the First Selectman, Ken Kellogg and the entire Board of Finance for giving great thought to what should be done on capital. I agree with their approach and support them.
Thank you. Tony Scott?
Tony Scott here. Yeah, I'll, I'll second that too. I appreciate the tough decisions you guys have to make. These are not easy decisions and it takes a lot of guts to make these decisions. And of course, there's, there's, there's risk involved, but I appreciate you guys looking at all different ways to see how you're mitigating some of this risk as we look, not just this year, but two years down the road. So I appreciate that. I mean, in terms of capital budget, this, this is the right path to take. I, I'm totally aligned to that. One side question I have, and I know it's not capital budget related, but since I have Ron and Mike both here, where do we stand on FY20? And then if there's anything FY21 with the Board of Ed budget? We haven't been given an update on the, on the FY20 piece of the Board of Ed and where we stand in terms of any hole that we previously had.
I mean, Ron can speak to it in detail. Part of the problem was we didn't have a great estimate because we didn't really get an official word that schools weren't going back until literally last week. So now we can kind of close out a lot of POs and there can get a much more accurate number. The situation has helped us financially, let's be honest. I mean, there was a big hole on the Board of Ed side that we were facing that we were all aware of. That has come down. I can let Ron speak to specifics because obviously he's more involved in it than I am.
Yeah, so this is Ron Bonavsky, Director of Finance. Tony, yeah, that, that deficit at one point was tracking in excess, was a seven-figure deficit. It's, it's going to be below 500,000. The majority of that savings, and I expect that to tighten up quite a bit. We are still in the process of closing a lot of the transportation POs, regular ed, special ed, athletic. So there, you know, between spring sports stipends not being paid, transportation. You know, it was a light winter, so there was some custodial overtime that, that wasn't impacted. So yeah, it, it, some things worked in our favor. You know? If, if that, you know, under the circumstances, it, it was a it was certainly a positive.
Okay, I appreciate that. And heads up just as, you know, there, there could have been a bigger issue at their, you know, in terms of our rainy day fund or wherever we're at, if that was going to be a problem. So, okay, good. That, that relieved a lot of that worry. So I appreciate it. I'm 100% aligned where you guys are headed. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
No, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I echo the, all the appreciation and thanks. Not easy, tremendous amount of work to come to those conclusions, but I have no other points.
Myself, I feel the same way. I could just go through everybody's opinion. We're all on the same target. And we thank the Board of Finance and Mr. Bonavsky, no end. So now each member has spoken. I'll now ask each council member to indicate if they have any further discussion. So DeeDee Martin?
No further discussion.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, no further discussion.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, no further discussion.
John Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no discussion.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no further discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no further discussion.
And Enid Lapelis, no further discussion. So that completes our discussion. This item, moving to item B.
Thank you for having me, Madam Chair. I will keep you posted as anything develops.
Thank you. Moving to item B, Resolution 20-52 to consider and act upon a resolution regarding construction, engineering and inspection agreements between the Town of Monroe and BL Companies, Connecticut Incorporated for State Project 84-109. Since Mr. Rourke is not here, I will introduce the resolution for consideration. I hereby introduce Resolution 20-52 to consider and act upon a resolution regarding construction, engineering and inspection agreement between the Town of Monroe and BL Companies, Connecticut Incorporated for State Project 84-109. Resolution 20-52 resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the construction, engineering and inspection agreement and any associated documents binding between the Town of Monroe and BL Companies, Connecticut regarding State Project 84-109. Is there a second? We need a second.
Tony Scott, second.
Thank you. Okay, I'll now turn the floor with Mr. First Selectman Kellogg to start the discussion. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So hopefully this is this rings a bell with the council members. I know that this project is something we spoke about several months ago. You'll recall that you've already authorized, we approved the contract with the Grasso Companies for the actual construction portion of this. DOT has authorized. The DOT was waiting for us to approve the last piece of this, which was a the inspection services during construction. That we went through a procurement process to award to BL Companies, who is also the same company involved in the design portion of the project. You'll recall that this project is a fairly large, large cost item that is 90% funded, 80 through federal, 10% from state, leaving the town with 10% of the remaining costs. Those are all fully approved and authorized from prior, prior actions by the town. So before us now is, is this agreement. We received on April 21st, the final direction from the state with an authorization to award and enter into this contract with BL. This would be the last approval relative to the vendors that we would have to undertake. One of the things that was certainly a concern that I had in discussions with, with finance as well was that you know, this project, there's a, there's a couple of issues. One is it's a very large cost project that we are reimbursed for. The, the way this project works, it's a reimbursement basis. So knowing that the, the funds are there is very important. Given that this is about a $7.5 million project and we certainly don't want to be on the hook for any more than the 10%. I'll just remind everyone that we discussed this at the, at the last time, but the, the work that's already been invested to date is probably double that amount already. So this is one of those projects that we're again, kind of between a rock and a hard place from a spend perspective. The commitment has already been made. It would cost us double to walk away from the project. It would cost us another probably $200,000 to $300,000 if we simply just had to pave this road on our own without doing any of the improvements. So there's that, that issue to consider. So it's in our interest to continue from that regard. But getting back to, I was talking about the concerns of is the funding going to be there from a federal and state perspective? I have, as have our staff, worked diligently to try and, we've gotten confirmations from the region, MetroCog, from Connecticut DOT, and I also have been in contact with federally through Congressman Heinz's office to get assurances that the federal funding is there and that it's committed. I'll just, I'll, I'll read you one comment that we received from the manager of capital planning from highways at DOT. He said that the Federal Highway Administration have authorized the project. The expenses are fully eligible and have been fully allocated. And the risk of anything financial changing at this point is, and he put all caps, zero. So certainly gave me some comfort level that the funds will be there as we go into the reimbursement cycle, which have been told would be monthly. The other concern we had was just over how that would flow out on the overall project. Because some of those months originally, even that one month spend was kind of a lot. And when we're talking about going into our fund balance, making sure we've got the cushion there is important. The town engineer, working with our contractors, working with the state have developed a revised plan that smoothes that out considerably involving pushing off some of the more expensive work towards the end of the project and it cuts some of those peaks down by half of what they were. So it makes them much more manageable. So just to go over that background, but getting back to this agreement, it has been reviewed by the town attorney, including his letter of opinion. I know Mr. Schott's line, I, I texted him at the beginning. I believe he was attempting to call in. He was having some technical problems, but I, I believe he is on the call if there are any detailed engineering questions that you have for him in this phone book of a contract, which is true form for the state contracts. So any questions you may have in that regard, I will invite him to, to, to speak to. So with that, I don't know if Scott is on. Anything to add, Scott, if you are on?
No, I, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, no, I didn't have anything else to add. That was pretty comprehensive. I'm here to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Also, when, when I do the roll call for discussion, then people can ask you questions. Okay, Scott?
Okay.
Okay, so I'm now calling each member of Town Council by name for discussion. So DeeDee Martin?
I have no discussion. This has been on our plate for a long time. And with the the reassurances that the reimbursement will be there, I'm comfortable with this.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, I also feel like we have been listening to discussion on this topic since I've been on council even before. But thank you. No, no, no questions.
Jason Mauer?
No questions. Jason Mauer.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, I just want to thank the First Selectman and his administration for ensuring that this project will be funded at both the state and federal level. No other comment.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no further comment.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no further comment.
And I, Enid Lapelis, have no further comment. I will once again call on each member of Town Council for further opportunity for discussion. So DeeDee Martin?
No further comment.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, no further comment.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, no comment.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no comment.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no further comment.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no further comment.
And Enid Lapelis, no comment. I'll now call for a roll call vote on the adoption of Resolution 20-52. So DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, I vote aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
Enid Lapelis, aye. So the motion passes 7 to 0. Items C through E are the acceptance of donations out individually over $1,500. As you all know, these items are put on our agenda separately so that the council may recognize these larger donations. However, I think I speak for all members of council by saying that the outpouring of contributions from our community in the face of this pandemic is remarkable and is greatly appreciated. So we're going to do motion by motion for the donations. I make a motion to accept the donation from Monroe Lions Charities, Monroe Lions Club to the Monroe Food Pantry in the amount of $4,000. Is there a second?
Jen Aguilar, second.
Okay, Jen Aguilar, is there? Okay, Jen Aguilar, is there any discussion? So DeeDee Martin, discussion?
No discussion.
Jen Aguilar?
Just, just a repeat of what you said. Thank you to the entire community, almost $30,000 in donations. It's amazing.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, just echoing all of the statements about the extreme generosity within the town. Thank you very much.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no discussion.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no further discussion.
And Enid Lapellis, no discussion. I will now call for a roll call vote on the motion to accept this motion, uh, this donation. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, I vote aye.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
John Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
And Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Enid Lapellis, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Going on to motion to accept the donation from the David Wang to the Monroe Food Pantry in the amount of $2,000. Is there a second?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, Jason Mauer, uh, any discussion? So DeeDee Martin?
No discussion.
Okay, Jennifer Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, no discussion.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, no discussion.
John Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no discussion.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no discussion.
And Enid Lapellis, no discussion. I'll now call for a roll call vote on the motion to accept this donation. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney? Oh, he's not here, I'm sorry. Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
Enid Lapellis, aye. So this motion passes seven to zero. Motion to accept the donation from William Benedict Incorporated to the Monroe Food Pantry in the amount of $3,265. Is there a second?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, discussion. DeeDee Martin?
No discussion.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, no discussion.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, no discussion.
John Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, no discussion.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no discussion.
Myself, no discussion. I'll now call for a vote on the motion to accept this donation. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, I vote aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And myself, uh, aye, so this passes seven to zero. And, uh, the one thing Ms. Aguilar wanted for new business, item F. So Ms. Aguilar, can you make your motion and then we'll discuss it, et cetera?
I make a motion, I made a motion at the beginning actually to move it, um...
Right, so, so let's, so discuss what you want to discuss.
Okay. Mr. Kellogg, I had a question about Resolution 20-52.
Madam Chair, um, you have to, Ms. Aguilar requested that the items be, uh, moved to the agenda, so you do need a motion to amend the agenda to add, uh, item, uh...
F. F.
Uh, F to new business.
Okay, so, um, I'll make a motion to move, uh, item F from the, um, from the, um, well, from the consent calendar, no, not, yeah, from the consent calendar, no, it's, it's from the, um...
You're right. It's F to, F from consent to, uh, F new business.
Okay, so F from consent to F new business. I'll make a motion. Uh, do I have a second for this motion?
Jen Aguilar, second.
Okay, um, so we have to, we have to actually vote. So, oh, let's do discussion. So Ms. Aguilar, discussion?
Oh, sorry. Mr. Kellogg, I just had a couple of questions on this resolution. Uh, the first one, on the MO, MOU with United Way, did we find our, I mean, I don't know if Henna is still on this call. Did we find out about that after April 1st? Cause I saw it was effective April 1st, but we didn't sign it until, uh, May 1st.
Miss, I, uh, I just want to interrupt again. We're just discussing whether or not there's comment to, uh, as to the vote to add it to new business before we discuss the actual...
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll have to go through and see if it's okay with everybody, correct?
No, I'm really sorry.
So, okay, so DeeDee Martin, okay with you to add this to new business?
Absolutely.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Yes.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Uh, Jonathan Formicella, don't have a problem with it.
Scott?
Uh, Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Enid Lapellis, aye. So now for discussion, so Ms. Aguilar, aye.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the following resolution, resolve that the town council hereby ratifies the First Selectmen's execution of the following agreements pursuant to Resolution Number 20-40, Southwestern Connecticut Agency on Aging Grocery Bag Project Agreement, Fairfield County Community Foundation Grant Agreement, Amendment to Agreement with the Last Mile Racing LLC, MOU between Connecticut United Way of Coastal Fairfield County, and the Cisco Credit Application.
Okay, is there a second for this motion?
Jonathan Formicella, second.
Okay, so, um, for discussion, DeeDee Martin?
Uh, no discussion. I, I'm waiting to hear from, um...
Right, correct. And, and we'll do that after I go through all these. So Jennifer, Jen Aguilar?
No discussion on that.
Jen, this is where you do have discussion.
Oh, wait, this is where I do have to, I'm so confused. Okay. Now I can ask Mr. Kellogg questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I am so sorry, everybody. I'm going to call him next time. Um, Mr. Kellogg, um, on item four, the MOU between, with United Way, did we get, did we get this after April? Is that why it is signed on May? Cause it was effective in April? April 1st, I noticed.
Yeah, I believe they were making it a, a retroactive, uh, once we could, uh, execute it, but I don't, I'm looking to see if I recall exactly we got it. I know that the town attorney sent his, uh, his note of, um, opinion so that I could be comfortable executing it on May 1st. Uh, I don't know if Henna's still on the line. She may have some more info of when United Way first gave it to us, but, um...
Hi, uh, it's Henna.
Hi, Henna.
Hi, I received the email from United Way on April 17th.
April 17th, okay. And does, is this the, uh, gift cards that you were talking about earlier? Is that what this is?
Uh, yes, those gift cards.
Okay. Um, and one more question, I'm sorry. Um, the Cisco credit application, is that something that we do normally? Um, or is that, is that a, is that a, I, I don't remember seeing that before, a credit application. What is that for?
Uh, certain vendors will not, uh, take orders, uh, and basically, uh, deliver, um, on the credit that you're going to, you know, uh, that you're going to make the payment on your, on your order. So, I mean, Cisco is a fairly large operation. It's kind of their normal mode of operation, so, uh, rather than, uh, you know, it was the kind of thing where we're just, to make sure that we would have a backup source of groceries, uh, when, uh, there's certainly some concern out there that there could be supply chain interruptions and, uh, needing to have it in place. Um, this is the way Cisco operates, uh, regardless of our issue of a PO. They wanted to have, uh, a credit application on file. Um, there's no, I mean, the town is the guarantor, there's no other, uh, you know, there's nothing else there than the terms and conditions that the town attorney was comfortable with. So, um, it was somewhat unusual. I don't, I mean, uh, I'd have to defer to, I see Ron is still on, Finance Director, if he can recall any other credit applications we've had to deal with with other vendors, but, um, uh, that's what Cisco required, so. But obviously, our processes remain in, in, in full force. So, I mean, we certainly wouldn't, uh, there's no ability to buy anything on credit any more than there is in normal operations where you have to submit a requisition, which has to be approved by everyone involved in the process and it has to be, uh, uh, you know, a purchase order still has to be issued.
Okay, okay, that, I'm, I'm good. Thank you. Thanks, Ron. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so I'm going through, uh, so it's legal. Any more discussion on this motion? DeeDee?
Hmm, no more discussion.
Okay, uh, Jen Aguilar?
I won't be funny. Jen Aguilar, no more discussion.
Okay, Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, just one quick question on the amendment to the agreement with the Last Mile Racing LLC. Uh, I know that since this has happened, uh, Sprint from Monroe has, uh, decided to go ver, to do a basically a virtual run. Uh, is that going to cause another amendment, I'm assuming, or a cancellation of the contract altogether?
It will likely, uh, something will have to be done. Um, I believe the worst case scenario is we might lose a deposit, uh, from the Sprint, uh, that would be funded through the Sprint. Uh, but I, I, I was informed of that as well, so I'll have to look into it. Um, I, the last, uh, I got, I did get a quick email on that, but I haven't had a chance to, uh, get into the details yet, but my understanding is that, you know, there certainly we're not going to be on the hook for the cost of the race, which is the large, the largest part of the cost, um, they're making a small, uh, a small deposit that we may be, uh, liable for, but, um, but yes, you are correct. I did see that that happened subsequent, uh, to this, that the, uh, the Sprint, uh, committee or, or volunteers, uh, feel that they're likely going to go to a, uh, an online, uh, fundraiser format at this point.
Wonderful, thank you. And then just one thing I did want to share from some community members that have reached out, uh, regarding the grocery bag project, uh, and how wonderful it is. And, uh, I've had not only members within the community, uh, talk to me about how great it is, but also some members who are from this community, who still have parents or grandparents in this community, and they are farther and, uh, people my age who are further away and, uh, are very appreciative of the fact that their parents or grandparents, uh, are able to get these groceries without, uh, risk since they can't be here to go shopping for them. So I just wanted to commend Henna and the entire team there on, uh, everything they're doing, but just wanted to share some of that positive feedback that I've received from members of the community.
Okay, Jonathan Formicella, any discussion?
Jonathan Formicella, no discussion.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no discussion.
Enid Lapellis, no discussion. So I'm now calling for a roll call vote to accept this motion, Resolution 20-49. Uh, DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, I vote aye.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Jennifer Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
Enid Lapellis, aye. So the motion passes seven to zero. And, uh, since we said, me, upfront where Stephen Kirsch and, uh, Hannah Ali said they were listening, they're, they're not, uh, actually doing anything in terms of public participation. Am I correct, Mr. Moderator?
Uh, I don't know that they've acknowledged that for the second public participation, so I think it'd be appropriate to ask anybody who's, uh, willing to participate or wish to participate in the second public participation, just to make it, uh, official.
Okay, if there are any members of the public who wish to participate at this time, I would ask that each of you slowly and clearly state your name, one at a time, so that I can make a list. I once again remind you, each of you to abide by the guidelines of public participation set forth in the agenda. All right, so please identify yourself one at a time now, if you wish to speak. Okay, looks like there are no individuals who wish to speak. So, um, going on, and, uh, last thing to do is make a motion to, um, I can't think what the word is in Washington, so make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, Jason Mauer?
Adjourn, thank you. Yep, uh, to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Uh, we have to go through a vote call again. All right, so DeeDee Martin?
Vote to adjourn. DeeDee Martin?
Jennifer Aguilar?